Good morning, and we'll call to order the meeting of the RTC Board of Directors. Ms. Maynard.
Thank you Chairman Brown and members of the Commission. Your first item is to conduct your first citizens' participation.
It's the first time set aside for public comment. Those wishing to speak to the Board on a posted agenda item now is your opportunity. I see movement. No one no. Seeing no one will close this portion of public comment?
All right, Mr. Chairman, the next order of business is to approve the agenda. The agenda is in order and ready for your approval.
Motion on the floor for approval. All those in favor signify by saying aye, opposed. Motion carries.
Okay, and the next item is to receive the CEO report. Today's CEO report begins with a very important initiative, the 2020 U.S. Census Count, which kicks off today. I'd like to recognize our contractors who have donated resources towards spreading the word so Nevada gets a complete count. Keolis, MV Transportation, and Vector Media are all contributing to this critical effort. As they do their part, we need to do ours by completing the census form, which is safe and confidential. As you know, the results of the census taken every 10 years will help to decide how $675 billion in federal tax funding is distributed to states and communities over the next decade. This is a crucial project that will help us get more funding for valuable services like transportation, schools, and healthcare. Our local census engagement team is hosting a community kickoff event just outside the Clark County Amphitheater until noon, letting residents know that they can take the census online or by phone starting today. I encourage everyone to join the event following this meeting. Next, we have an operator recognition from our contractor, MV Transportation. Cesar Mendoza, if you'd come down? Mr. Mendoza's inspiring story began when he first came to Las Vegas and was homeless when MV hired him. He saved his wages, found an apartment, and got his life back on track. He even met his wife while on the job. During his nearly 14 years with MV, Mr. Mendoza has made our customers his priority, which is evident with his average 97.3% on-time performance stats. Please join me in congratulating this wonderful human being, Cesar Mendoza.
First and foremost, I'd like to say thank you to my higher power, my wife, for getting me to this point in my life. I'd like to say thank you to RTC and MV Transportation for the recognition. I know sometimes my job could be stressful, but rewarding at the same time. I enjoy transporting people in this great city, and I just want to say thank you for giving me the opportunity for being a coach operator for this great city of Las Vegas. Thank you.
Now, we'd like to recognize an operator from our contractor, Keolis, Charleston Eberhart. Mr. Eberhart is credited with helping law enforcement find a missing child. While traveling northbound on Route 109 Maryland Parkway one evening, a passenger alerted him about a 10-year-old boy alone at one of the stops. Mr. Eberhart brought the boy into the bus and immediately called radio dispatch, who in turn contacted Metro. He stayed with the boy in the bus until the fire department and police arrived and transported the boy to safety. Thank you, Mr. Eberhart, for your big heart, for your service to this young man and to our community.
Hello, and good morning to everybody that was able to come out today. I want to first start off by thanking the Mohsah for making all this possible, and I thank RTC for giving me the opportunity to serve such a great city, community, and I want to thank Keolis for giving me the opportunity to display my worth, ethnics, and just perform a good service to the people. As far as the child that was rescued, I want to say, I just thank the Mohsah for putting me in a position to be an archangel for him, a guardian angel for him, to deliver him to the right people so that he can get the proper help that was needed. And I just thank you all for coming out and all your support and for this opportunity. My heart rejoices, and I'm just very proud to be in this position today. And I just thank you all again. And I would have did it anyway without the recognition because it's the right thing to do, and I also hope that my example will be, you know, affect others and cause others to not just overlook matters, but take matters seriously. When you see a child in need or elder in need, anyone, any human being, you know, we shouldn't have to get rewards for just doing what we need to do anyway. It should just be love that motivates everything and causes us to do such a great deed. So I hope the child is okay. I was looking forward to hopefully seeing him today and meeting his family, but it's still a blessing to me, you know, to know that I did the right thing. And I just thank y'all for this time. Have a great day.
And finally, I'm excited to announce that our partners, the local jurisdictions, have finished construction of all 225 projects funded by the first phase of fuel revenue indexing. I'd like to thank the Public Works Directors and their staff for all of the time and effort they spent toward this momentous achievement that has reduced congestion, increased capacity, and enhanced safety for the public. They worked hand-in-hand with the contracting community to maintain and build new roads, bike lanes, bridges, and sidewalks. Thank you all for your hard work and dedication. Lastly, I'd like to recognize this person sitting next to me, Mr. John Pinuelas, our Senior Director of Engineering, and Joe Damiani, our Engineering Manager, there he is, for moving this program along to the benefit of our residents and our visitors. And that concludes your CEO report. Excuse me. The next item is to receive the Nevada Department of Transportation Director's Report from Director Christina Swallow.
Good morning. I am going to start today, like I always do, with a safety slide. You'll note the safety slide is a little bit different this time, as I want to highlight an event that's coming up later this month, but I'm still going to provide you with the data. And so far, I should start with saying, last year, we had a really good year in that we had fewer fatalities all year long, tracking each month fewer than the previous year. And while every fatality is one too many, it was good to be able to say we were doing better than in the past. That is not the case this year, unfortunately. Last month, we were ahead of the previous year. This month, we are again ahead of last year, and we have lost 48 people on our roadways so far this year. That's eight more than last year at this time. Pedestrian fatalities are also up. In Clark County, there's been 11 versus nine at this time last year. And I realize that when I was talking about this, every time last year, I was talking about numbers, 48, 11, 9, and maybe that wasn't real enough. And so I'm going to start telling a little bit, a brief story, every month as well. So of those 11 fatalities, pedestrian fatalities so far this year, tragically, one of those was a child who was hit by a car. He and his sister, on Valentine's Day, were walking home from school. They were in a crosswalk on a street near their school when they were hit. The older brother, he was 12, he passed away a few days later, and his sister was significantly injured and has spent quite a while in the hospital, and her life will be, and that of her family, will be forever impacted by this tragic collision. As I talk about these stories, I'm going to talk about those who've lost their lives, but I also will likely talk about those who maybe made a bad decision, because that's part of this, right? All of us have a responsibility when we talk about the roads and how we make sure that the system is safe. It's engineering, it's education, it's emergency response, it's enforcement, and like I've said every month, it's every one of us and our own responsibilities. You can see on this slide that later this month, we will be having an event where we'll debut a new film, My Best Friend: A Pedestrian Story. It was completed by one of our internal photographers, and we'll be doing an event in coordination with the Vision Zero folks and including a panel of parents who have lost their child or lost a family member in a pedestrian crash. I hope you guys can make it. It's at 10:00 a.m. on March 19th. All right, now a little more exciting, happy news. We are kicking off I-15/215 interchange in the Northeast Valley. We are tented, this project will be a system-to-system interchange. It's adding the northbound I-15 ramp, so northbound to westbound flyover and eastbound to northbound flyover to I-15 to really ensure that everyone can get to northbound I-15 and from northbound I-15 at freeway speeds faster and more effectively and more efficiently. It will also be improving access to Tropical, and you can see that, but there's a lot of roads on this, so I'm not even going to try and walk you through, but yet, so it'll be a significant improvement to that system-to-system interchange and also provide additional access for the local roads. We are also widening about a half a mile of Clark County 215 Beltway from four lanes to six lanes in the vicinity of the project. We expect the project to take shy of two years, about 600 days, so estimated completion will be in late 2022, and we currently have a groundbreaking scheduled for March 26 at 11:00 a.m. And I just say currently because, as we all know, we're sort of in a time of flux and change. So if anything changes with that, we'll be sure to let you know, but I hope you'll be able to attend if we do continue to have it. So just acknowledging the nature of where we are today and some of our events. So, all right, I-15 paving project. We will be paving roughly five miles of Interstate I-15 in Mesquite, from south of West Mesquite Boulevard to the Arizona border. It will be a mill and overlay in both directions. It will also repair and resurface the freeway bridge decks at Exit 118 and Exit 120, and there'll be new signage, drainage, and lighting. And again, this one is supposed to start later this quarter, in second quarter of 2020, and finish by late fall. So it should be just this year project. All right, this one, I have a short video for you. You may recall last month, we had the rice video that Tracy showed, kind of showing how we're hoping to use our signs as they go into full phase to help manage speeds. We did a driver view of that. It's about a 30-second video, and the signs are placed at much closer density than what you would experience when driving. They're about a quarter-mile apart when you're driving, so I'm going to talk through it a little bit before I get it started. So as you're watching this, you'll see the sign you can see most readily right there gives an alert warning that the speed limit is going to drop. And once the speed limit drops, the following signs will show how we're going to alert the public, what lane is they need to merge away from, and what lanes are closed. So it'll be a yellow and a red, or a yellow and all green, a red, a yellow, green. You'll also note on the left side, where those HOV signs are, the very, very next sign, so right now you can sort of see that it says "two-plus only." The very next sign, when we drop that speed limit, we're opening, it'll say "open to all." And so we're also being able to change and notify the public that when those HOV lanes are open and that it's okay, we can't also put "okay" to cross a double line, but I'm letting you know, if we're in this situation, when we say "open to all," it's okay to cross that double line, because we want people to move over into that lane to get around the incident that's downstream. So I'm going to show the video real quick. And, all right, so this one says, "Speed limit's dropping." Speed limit has dropped to 35. The HOV is open to all. The right lane is being told to merge. The right lane closes. The next lane is being told to merge. HOVs are still open to all. Everybody merges over. You can see the HOV lane says "open," and now the HOV says "back to two-plus," and all the lanes are back open. So that's roughly what you'll experience. That was a 30-second video. Signing was much tighter than what you would experience as you're driving at 35 miles an hour on quarter-mile spacing, but I wanted to give everybody an idea of what this is going to look like. I also wanted to reiterate that we will also use these signs to manage speeds regardless of an incident. So recently, I was driving, I landed around 8:00 in the morning the other day, and I was driving north, coming down to the county facilities, and I was driving on the freeway, and I looked down to see what my speed was, and I was going about 55 miles an hour. And I was going the same speed as everybody around me. We were all going 55 miles an hour, even though the speed limit was 65. In those conditions, the speed limit will actively be brought down to 55 miles an hour. It won't be the technicians doing that. It is actually a passive, automatic tech solution. So the tech will say, if everybody's automatically going slower, the tech will drop that speed limit, because again, we want to make sure everyone's going the same speed and not somebody darting around going at 75 miles an hour, because that driver behavior is what will cause the collision and what causes the brake lights and the fear and cause the system to break down. So this is, what I showed you is in the event of an incident, but regularly, we will be seeing the speed limit adjusting according to the speed of traffic on the road, trying to make sure that everybody is harmonized so we can get more people through the system effectively, safely, and get everyone home in a more reliable time. These signs, we expect to go live later this month. And I should also add, if any of you want us to come talk at your city council or county commission meetings, if you, we're working on, we're working with the media to have them help spread the word, but we're also happy to come talk to you as, if you have any questions, or if you want us to share it with your constituents. And then lastly, I wanted to highlight Nevada Moves Day. Nevada Moves Day is next week, March 18 officially. There are over 47 schools in Clark County participating, and walking and bike events are planned throughout the entire state. The intent of this event is to help everyone understand how to safely use our roads, whether you're walking or biking, and help kids arrive safe to school. We know, and there's data showing that when kids wike, or wike, wike, walk or bike to school, they arrive more prepared to learn. And so we want to make sure that we get the best of our learning outcomes, but that also they're able to get there safely. And the more people who are walking and biking, the safer the system is for everyone. So if you're interested in participating, like I said, there's 47 schools in Clark County participating. Don Darrow Elementary will actually have their event on March 20. It's an after-school event at 2:10 in the afternoon, so if you're interested in participating, we're happy to connect you to one of the schools that is participating, and hopefully you can join some kids in getting to and from school safely. Thank you.
Chairman Brown, can I make a few comments?
Mayor, please.
Thank you. As Mayor of the City of Henderson, I believe that it's imperative that we address the significant concerns that Henderson has documented regarding the Nevada Department of Transportation's proposal to combine two previously approved interchanges into a single combined interchange on I-15 South. This rushed decision based on limited and outdated information threatens the economic development of not only West Henderson, but of our region as a whole, because it completely disregards our approved transportation plans that have been established over time and through public outreach to facilitate the development of this fast-growing section of our community. Our city staff has worked diligently to resolve this issue with, and despite their continued indifference to our request for the reevaluation of their decision, or even requests to pause, to understand and incorporate the concerns of the city that the city has identified. As the regional agency which oversees Southern Nevada's critical transportation issues, we need to be apprised of incidents like this in order to better serve our community. As partners in developing our region's transportation network, we also need to communicate changes that will directly impact other communities before we embark on this new path. Chairman Brown, with your permission, I've asked our Chief Infrastructure Officer and Assistant City Manager, Rob Herr, to provide us with an update on this situation. Rob, would you please provide us with that update?
Thank you, Mayor March. Chairman and members of the Commission.
And can we put that map on the screen that he's put down?
I'll get started while we work on that. Thank you. I want to give a brief update. We've been, we were notified in October of this year that the Nevada Department of Transportation had sent a letter requesting that the Federal Highway Administration begin a process to look at combining what has long been planned to have two interchanges in our West Henderson area on South I-15 and combine those into a single location. And on the map, just for reference, the Inspirada community shown in the yellow, we had identified an interchange here at the existing Sloan interchange location, as well as a new interchange here about a mile spacing between St. Rose and what we term Villanobila. Those interchanges were part of an environmental assessment that was completed with a finding of no significant impact in 2009, and we've been building our West Henderson transportation and land-use plans around those interchanges since that time and actually leading up to that time as well. When we learned of NDOT's letter to the Federal Highway Administration in the fall, we had some meetings with NDOT staff, and they continued to say we were pursuing this single interchange location, and a lot of the justification was based on outdated information. The regional transportation model in this area doesn't reflect the development that we have shown in our existing land-use plan, and we've been in a process trying to get that updated, first with the Southern Nevada Traffic Study, and then more recently, the city just stepped in and took that on themselves to get that moving forward. I think what we're asking today is that NDOT recognize all the projects that we have and all the reliance that has been made on those interchange locations. As many of you know, Haas Automation, with 2.5 million square feet of development that will begin this April, is a real thing, and we'll see 400 to 500 cars a day on Villanobila alone. And to have those vehicles and largely truck traffic move south to a combined location at this spot just doesn't make sense to us. The Sloan interchange was really identified to help with residential traffic coming out of Anthem as an alternative to Eastern Avenue, as well as to help alleviate executive airport drive by having Inspirada to be able to come to the west to get to I-15. And then Villanobila would serve a lot of the commercial and industrial development that's happening in our West Henderson area. To combine that amount of commercial industrial traffic with residential is very problematic to us. I think what we're asking today is that we get a better line of communication with NDOT and that they really come sit with us to understand all the investment that has been made based on these plans. We know that we have worked very closely with developers right at that interchange location at Villanobila and Las Vegas Boulevard in Well, and they actually cooperated with us, dedicated the road right away so that we could have that connection. And so our frustration is this lack of communication, this drive to go forward with a unilateral staff decision rather than reaching out to City of Henderson before initiating discussions with federal highways. We now, and we actually, after our meeting, sent a letter requesting that we take a pause until we could share all the information we have, and our response back to that letter was that NDOT was going to continue. So unfortunately, we felt the need to bring it before this body and voice our concerns.
Thank you. Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the efforts to develop, to actually have industrial development in West Henderson began while I was yet in office as Mayor in Henderson, and I was tasked with preparing and then presenting to both Houses of Congress and their respective committees our arguments. As a part of all of that, we had to justify that while there was considerable residential development that was planned, Inspirada was already on the maps, and so much other development which is already there was screaming for another way to get to the I-15, we sat and concluded that it was a hollow request that we be allowed the 335, I don't remember the exact acreage any longer, but whatever it was, for development of industrial kinds of activities. We really needed to separate the traffic and felt, even at that time, that I-15 would function far better if we separated the traffic before it got to the I-15, because the Inspirada residential travel was likely to head north, whereas the truck traffic coming out of something like Haas, and Haas is just brand-new, but it represents the kind of thing that we were after, was likely interested in heading south. And separating those two before the traffic got to the freeway seemed to be the right kind of thing to do. We were thrilled when, at that time, we got the heads up, or excuse me, a thumbs up from NDOT and others, and eventually, it became a part of the expected plan, and we worked very hard to try and develop the area with industrial development. The problem is that the timing was about 2008, and things turned upside down for us. I left office in 2009, and since 2009, there's been a lot of work done, but only in the last three or four years have we seen an explosion of the kind that we would have hoped would happen out there. And so the considerations are not just the surface traffic, but also the functioning of the asset, the I-15. And our hope is that we can initiate- And our hope is that we can initiate whatever the discussions are that need to be had that have not yet been had, so that we can work together to really make this plan work. So, we're, I encourage NDOT to take a look at this, and I spoke with Ms. Swallow yesterday, or the day before yesterday on the tele, no, sometime this week on the telephone, and shared with her my concern and my kind of historical perspective on the thing. And our hope is that this is, this leads to a better opportunity for a discussion. And I have included our Public Works Department in these discussions. They have seen all of this, and they're fully aware of it, and they're anxious to be at the table as well. So, just please give us an opportunity to really make the case and keep an open mind so that we can work through this in a way that will help address what really has become an enormously successful opportunity in the West Henderson area and other areas that are surrounding that, that are in Clark County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman, can I just say a couple of words? I don't, I don't think we want to try this out, but I do want to just respond and make sure everyone's aware that, just a couple of key pieces. It is common and typical for us that when we start a project that has an older environmental document, that we will reevaluate the document, and so, and we reach out to federal highways to start that process. This particular environmental document is 12 years old, so it made sense for us to look at it, make sure that nothing has changed. Oftentimes, when we open the document, nothing has changed. Sometimes, things have changed in favor, sometimes things have changed such that now we need even more. So, we are, we have simply started the process to evaluate the environmental document, update it based on current information. That said, we've also committed to working with the City of Henderson to figure out what the best solution is, both in to make sure that we are maintaining and managing the throughput on, and the travel time reliability and the safety on I-15, and meeting Henderson's needs. So, we are committed to working through this. This was just us simply taking the first step. We continue to reach out and try to work with the City of Henderson, and we'll continue to do so. The model is, is an issue. We are required to use the RTC model, so if it, it doesn't have the updated information, that provides a challenge for us. And I understand that City of Henderson is working on providing that additional information to the RTC, so that will enable us to use up-to-date information in our analysis. So, we're committed to working with City of Henderson on this.
Anything else?
Okay, well, then, let's move on.
If I may.
Oh, yes.
Back. So, I'm not going to offer my engineering perspective on this issue, but there is a pause. We hit the pause button, so nothing is being driven at the federal level as far as a consolidation.
So, our consultant is looking at what an option could look like with one. We have an option for two. They're looking at, and they need to do all the engineering around what one would look like. We are, we do need to look at what the, what that looks like so we can define where that interchange or those interchanges will be, so that we can get the facilities in place prior to the high-speed rail coming through. So, there is a balance. We are awaiting the information from Henderson so that we can have updated traffic data, but we do need to look at what the interchange could look like if there was one, so we can start prepping and understand what that would look like environmentally, right-of-way wise, total cost. We are, we do have to look at both.
Question.
Okay.
So, if I can, can I ask a question or just at least respond some?
I think we're okay on this.
We all right with that?
Counsel?
We're not going to take action, right?
No action.
We're discussing.
Conversation purposes only.
Yeah, okay. So, one of the things that concerns us is that NDOT now, we learn, has a consultant. They're being paid to look at one combined, I'll call it, interchange, and the, there are probably not a set of circumstances in the world where Henderson would be agreeable to that. The Haas project, for instance, was announced very recently, but over months was negotiated, and a key element to the development, and this is primary manufacturing, this is something this valley lacks. To land Haas is as big a landing as we have seen in the valley. And the Haas reliance on the system they were shown, which is what the maps currently show, was a very important, not the single most important, but right up there in terms of the considerations that they made for a commitment here, and they're going to begin spending, they've been spending money, but they're going to begin actually building here in the next month or two. So, in terms of the process and how it works, help us understand why NDOT would engage someone to design something that is completely and totally objectionable to the local jurisdiction before we've had an opportunity to really work through what those issues might be. And it's, it, it should not matter whether the Brightline train is coming along the I-15. Brightline has a responsibility to react to whatever is either there or approved. And I'm no of no one at Clark County that has ever said to them, well, tell us what you want, and then we'll, we'll jump on board and work to reduce the number of crossings that you have to make. The commitment that we would require of them is that they go deep enough to get under any interchange or any roadways, or high enough to get over them safely. But not that we would pick a few, or pick one that we just won't make you do so that it's a little cheaper, easier to do. We, I, I think it's been recognized across Clark County that we support a high, a high-speed rail alternative. But this feels like it is something that has moved so far along, there is almost a predetermined outcome, and we need comfort on that, because if you're spending money, I mean, we know that the state isn't flush, we know that there are limited resources for highway construction, all of that. So, the, just knowing that you've already engaged somebody to do the design makes us feel like this thing is like on its way, and that, that is a real concern.
So, thank you. Regarding high-speed rail, I shouldn't say that we're trying to eliminate their costs, we're trying to manage our costs on that. So, in terms of where, if they are, they are on the eastern side, or they're proposing to be on the eastern side of the right-of-way, I just want to make sure everyone understands we are working with them to mitigate our costs when we're talking about this. So, wherever they, once they're there, if we have to bridge them, that's extra bridging costs for us, extra construction mitigation. So, I just want to make sure that's clear, and we're trying to make sure that we identify as much as we can in advance of them. So, so that's the only reason why I brought them up. When we started looking at the EA, I should note that there were two fairly significant changes from 2008 that were not included in the original environmental document. The first is a, I believe it's the Duck Creek Detention Basin on the, on the western side of I-15, directly across from the Villanobila interchange. That particular detention basin wasn't fully vetted out. At 2008, it is there and prepared, and planned to be there now. So, any interchange at the Villanobila location would not be able to serve anybody further west, and the mountains are there, so that might not be an issue, but it would be eastern only, and it would impact the capacity of the detention basin as we understand it currently. So, we have to, so we're looking at that. That is one of the things, that is one of the significant changes that caused us to look at what our options are and what we may need to do. The other significant change was the development of the Speed Vegas site at Sloan, east of Las Vegas Boulevard. Again, that is something that is different from when we did the EA. We've done estimates on what that property value will be. We have not approached them, as we're not able to approach property owners before we have a design, and we don't want to do an inverse condemnation, so we have to make sure that we understand it. And, and so, that's what this is. This is the first stage. In order to do the environmental document, you actually need to understand what the interchange will look like or what the facility will look like. They are not doing full design, that is not the intent. We are simply looking to see what the options are and trying to work with the City of Henderson with the data we have, and now I understand data will be provided, to figure out what will best meet the needs of both agencies and everyone traveling to and from our community on I-15. I, I don't think we want to get into traffic engineering. I certainly have data here based on the information we have, but as, as Mr. Herr mentioned, as Mayor March mentioned, we do not have the traffic data. It was not in the model for City of Henderson's plans. Unfortunately, we are limited that we have to use that model. So, if we can get that information, if it can get incorporated in the model, we, it'll provide us with additional information. We are committed to working with the City of Henderson, but we also need to make sure that we are doing what's best for all parties, and, and that might mean that we do something different than what we're currently doing, but we do have to go through the process. It's the environmental documents.
All right, let me jump, and we're not going to get into this conversation. Pause, just put the pause on, because this, this is reminiscent of past years where someone at NDOT in Carson City in a cubicle is making decisions for Southern Nevada. That's in the past, and knowing nothing about this, my impression is, NDOT kind of jumped the gun instead of going, sitting down with Henderson and saying, look, we have some concerns, things have changed, bring us up to speed on why we have to. That is, from my opinion, in my opinion, your role. Your role is to make sure you're working with the partners in Southern Nevada before NDOT imposes what they think is the right thing to do. So, I would encourage you to pause everything, sit down with Henderson, and, and straighten it out, because I'm sure engineering will be figured out what's best, but please don't go into the old days where people in Southern Nevada felt that Carson City was making judgments. And as far as costs, I'll say it again, you shouldn't be looking consolidate anything down to one or because of your costs. There's money. There's money in FRI. There's money in Southern Nevada, there's money in NDOT. So, money should not be an object if two goes to one. There's plenty of money. I think what we've heard from the representatives from the area is, this is critically important, and these decisions have to be made now, and priority funding needs to be committed now. So, we're not 10 years from now looking and saying, geez, I wish we would have done something. So, I'll leave it at that, but pause, get with Henderson, and greater minds will figure this one out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next on the agenda is to approve the consent agenda, which consists of items 5 through 49, and may be taken in one motion.
Motion on the floor, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next item 50, we do not need to, to go to because we have no legal matters to discuss. So, the final agenda, item 51, is to conduct your last citizen's participation.
Second time set aside for public comment. Those wishing to speak to the board, now is your opportunity. Step forward, state your name for the record. Comments will be limited to three minutes. Thank you. Patricia Anderson, do you want us to bring you a mic over? You're going to come up?
Hi, okay. Good morning, everyone. I'm Patricia Anderson. There's a lot going on, as we know, about the bus. That people feel that it's a free bus, and it's not. The last two, I mean, I've been observing and writing down, they drink, their drinks, what have you, they're eating on the bus, expired bus passes. It's a lot happening, and I know, and they are disrespectful to the bus driver. And when they get, I feel that when they get to the time point, they need to have 25 minutes, what have you, to unwind, because Decatur is a long bus line, because I'm on, I live on Decatur, so Decatur, you know, between, it gets oiled up to 2:15. I feel that they don't need to be, turn around and have to do a turnaround right quick. It's not fair to them. So, I, you know, because, you know, the passengers, you know, we, you're trying to deal with passengers, but they don't care. So, let's not go, you know, with this, with this passenger business. I mean, I know you want to have things on time, but the passengers are not there. The Lake Mead bus needs a double-decker. There, it's a very, it's very, always crowded, and I know, I mean, and what have you, and they, they need a, I mean, I know you can, you know, if they don't have a bus, they have to do what they have to do, but most, the buses are very crowded, and so, they need, really need a double-decker bus on that one, if you can. I mean, if you can't, I understand. They, you know, the dogs on the bus, okay, that's another thing. They, one, last week, this big dog, I mean, he wasn't even, he was a big, big dog, and he got, I mean, they shouldn't be on, they should not be on the dog, they should be in the, I mean, a certain, I mean, I know that people bring their dogs, but there should be a certain amount of, and all these dogs should come on the, on the bus, and they shouldn't be, there's too many dogs. And they have dogs, they're big, big, I mean, he was so big, people were afraid to get on the bus, but we got on the bus with it, whatever. And a lot of times, the dogs, they have, I mean, all right, I understand you, but they're not, they're not clean, what have you, some dogs are not clean. So, quite naturally, you can, you know, I mean, you don't know germs and stuff. So, this is why we say again, you know, we, it's a, I guess, observe, what have you, and I'll try to make next meeting, what have you, I've been busy, what have you, back and forth, but I'm going to try to make as much as I can. And I'll, but I just say again, we need to turn around again and have more stricter rules, what have you. Either you don't have, if you don't have your fare, you do not ride. That's my opinion.
Thank you. Stephanie Versnik?
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Stephanie Versnik. I'm speaking before you for the 25th time. I've been asking this commission to expand the service area for over two years. I'm here testifying on behalf of my son, who has a disability and no access to transportation to get to work, except for me. We live a half a mile outside the service area. Typically, my day begins with taking my son to the commissary on the base at 6:15 in the morning, then coming home, getting ready for work. In the afternoon, paratransit picks up my son from the commissary, takes him to the Centennial Hills Library. I leave work to pick up my son from the library, take him home, which is approximately a seven-minute drive to my home. Then I go back to work. Last month, I asked this commission to put on the agenda a premium service plan. I asked the commissioners to take the lead on this and design a plan that would give people with disabilities the option to pay a premium price to receive transportation. At least it would be an option for some members of our community who is willing to pay a reasonable premium rate for paratransit services. When the agenda came out on Monday, I was disappointed that I didn't see anything referring to a premium service plan. I'm not sure what the purpose is to testify and ask for an item to be on the agenda, then it's basically ignored. Isn't public comment supposed to be for citizens of this community to speak on their concerns, ideas, or solutions? I testify each month, and it's very frustrating when I ask for a possible solution and nothing happens. So, I'm asking this commission, once again, to please put a premium service plan on next month's agenda, so it can be voted on and we can have an option. As I mentioned in the beginning of my testimony, I have been asking for over two years to get transportation for my son. Until we expand the service area, this is my only option. Just a reminder, paratransit is supposed to provide transportation to its most vulnerable members in the community. It's not intended to be a profit entity. Paratransit service is an unfunded mandate. Give members in the community this option. In closing, recently, I made several public records requests. I am asking that the correspondence, which I have right here, be entered into public record along with my testimony. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Rita Varney?
My name's Rita Varney. Before I start my testimony...
Before I start my testimony, I'd like to make two comments about previous discussions that you had here. First of all, I'm glad there's plenty of money, because I'm going to mention this later. And another thing, the discussion of the location of the land that you were discussing, none of that is in within the paratransit or the RTC service area, too. So you might want to put that in the plan, too. My name's Rita Varney. I have testified in front of this committee on numerous occasions regarding to the need for an extended service area for RTC and paratransit. I have recently been able to meet with some community leaders and RTC management regarding my concern with lack of response to the requests that we have made each month to this committee. I have to say that I left that meeting with hope. It is difficult to speak at these monthly meetings and never be able to hear a response to actual questions and pleas that we have. I now know that I am being heard because I looked into the faces and the eyes of those people. I'm also very aware that they have to look at my face and into my eyes every month. I will hold them to the conversations that we had towards an improvement in the near future. I'm encouraged by RTC reaching out to the community through social media for input. I've been reading all of the responses, and I see that it isn't just the few in this room that are having issues with lack of service area. That seems to be the number-one complaint following the actual safety of the transit passengers. Budget and money seem to be at the beginning and the end of every part of the conversation when it comes to this topic. This is not a profit-making enterprise and should never be handled as such. As we see things being built all over our city and the, with city and county funds, I have also learned that funds are being moved all the time for these projects. I think it's time that finding funds for required transportation services are more important. Tourists are benefiting from new arches costing millions welcoming them to downtown Vegas while we are still talking to you each month about basic services in our city's transportation. Increasing the service area to prior extended area is needed immediately. Increasing the service area to be able to offer anyone living in an outlying area should be a goal. Vegas is building out, so should services.
Thank you for your comments. Robin Kincaid.
Good morning. My name is Robin Kincaid, and this is the 19th time that I've come before the commission regarding the need to change paratransit services area back to the 2011 configuration. I come to you today as a parent of a young adult who lives in the service area but cannot access business, essential services, or friends that are located outside the service area. My daughter was actually recently invited to a social function and actually had to decline the social function and the invitation because the family hosting the event did not live in the service area. And if you've ever been around or had a young adult with disabilities, these opportunities are so limited, creating networks of friends and things like that, this really affects the ability to do that. So transportation and mobility play key roles in the struggle for civil rights and equal opportunity for the disability community. Affordable and reliable transportation allows people with disabilities access to important opportunities in education, employment, health care, housing, and community life. In previous meetings, we've had some discussions regarding the financial picture at the RTC. Contributing to that dim picture has been related to ventures like the Triptus Strip program. That program was never approved by the Nevada Transit Authority and should never have been attempted without submitting an application and receiving approval from the Transit Authority. I would like to submit the invoices that are part of that, that I received through the public information requests, and I'm asking that they be part of the record today. I have additional questions that I have submitted to understand, you know, why ventures such as the Triptus Strip occur, and thousands of promotional materials that were printed are now sitting in a warehouse. The RTC still does not have a process to, in place to make changes to the fixed route which directly affect the paratransit service area. RTC continues to struggle with untimely pickups within the 30-minute window, excessive ride lengths, experienced that last night, by the way. It was about two and a half hours, almost three hours, my daughter was actually on the bus. And difficulty with keeping in the ride check system operating, had lots of difficulties with that. Obviously, there must have been some changes in that area as well, in the ride check. Once again, if a community, if we're going to embrace growth, we have to find a way to meet the needs of persons with disabilities. It is essential that we visit the configuration of the service area and determine how we can reconfigure the shape of the map to eliminate the inlets that contain essential services. As the valley expands, the access for persons with disabilities continues to shrink in comparison. This results in fewer choices and opportunities for persons with disabilities. In conclusion, I urge you to use some problem-solving strategies to resolve the many concerns that have been brought to you, so that individuals with disabilities will have the opportunities to be part of their community and receive the equal access, just like all of you have every day. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak to the board? She's, she's not going to speak? Seeing and hearing no one, we'll close this portion of public comment. This meeting is adjourned.